I see. I'm sure. She's not sure. I'm glad. 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 You need to order at the base where they are at the top.
We used to have to do that.
Or the same height, so we don't miss it. Not on the way. We're supposed to take the top off.
And please come on. My dad is very basic.
I like this. I like it very well.
Oh, it's wonderful. I must give you a moment. I am. Yes, go on. Careful. Well, that's what you want.
That's what I had to do. I'm not.
There you are. Thanks, dear.
It's a long quake. It's really not over.
I'm glad. I love it. I'll put the words out there. I may go after nine. As long as town people have their three minutes on the box dog. Because I realise I prefer a green one, it'll tell something. They make a ring. So it's important. Oh, my God. Get that thing. Just a pretty. We want that. We want it. We want it. We want it. So I'll try to get this one in. I like it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have an agent too.
I think you're the policy.
I don't know. I have a agent too. I don't know. I have a agent too. 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 I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
I know you're tired.
I have a agent too.
I think you're the policy.
I have a agent too. 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 We get pregnant, so. No, we thought. We thought. We thought. It was normal. It's been outstanding. They're perfect.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes. 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 That was the one that came in. Yes, it was. Yeah. I think if I smell of something, sit down. Yes.
I'd love to read that. Right. Briefing, everyone. Right. Item, well, the general is up on the scratch.
It's a positive, very positive. Downhead Crystal, and Henshaw, then kind of back with Brian and Will, and John McGraw.
That's what he said.
We've got a job.
Two preparations.
Yeah, can I do things we do, chairman? Can I take Rockstone first? Okay. So town council. Allotments. Is that good, or?
There is.
Um, I didn't see what else was on there. Anyone else got anything else to declare?
Town team.
Town team. Anything else? Yep. As I always say, if anything comes up, just raise your hand and maybe. Get your chair out of the way. Thank you.
Okay, item three, the municipal year. The town council meeting, how long on the twenty-fourth October?
It's time for a size.
I often say the same, but really.
Pause a second, is that right?
Pause a second.
Pause, yes, second, second, no, you have to say that we can put that on. I feel all important. Thank you.
Right. Item four is a request made by any member of the public to address the town council.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't received any requests by listening here.
Right. The million hinges.
We've been really busy. It's been brilliant. And I've got two or five attendants I had last night at the event. I mean, the councillors who were there really enjoyed it. People who attended, it was a really good audience. Lots of people inquiring about the January event for Dantley. So I would definitely recommend coming along for that. It was the first half day in Dantley to be part of it. And it was something to be, using that quality in a local environment, it was fantastic. Going back, it's like the remembrance services, there's lots of people I thank for that. Sunday and at the eleventh of the eleventh. I can't thank the team here for helping and employed, can't I? I thank my husband. And can I thank my son who came out and helped me at these events? And can I also thank John McGraw for stewarding extraordinary, who helped me in the morning as well? And I think it went very well. I've received feedback. And as you know, I'm going on with this next year. I should also thank James for helping me last night as well. He was the junior assistant in charge. There's so many things going on, I just don't know which one to pull out. Although the deputy mayor has a long list. Kind of just again recommend to you for Dantley in January. I also have a bar Ted coming up at Bedbury. I assume it's a four days, so I can bring more details to you when I have them. Can I also tell you, I now have eight for the civic service, which Sunday, this is Bedbury. And you're receiving invitations to that event that was made after I played this list. So the list is changing daily and events come in. And I know that January is really busy.
Right. Well, all I can say is that, I mean, last night at the, it's an exceptional, talented young man. It's terrific, epic, really. Absolutely incredible. Amazing voice, the girl. She really did that, she was amazing, right? I found out she was a half Greek. Half Greek, so it's beautiful, gorgeous. I went today, I went to the Pramay in Deesden. But not as an official, but that was a really, quite an interesting event. I met lots of people and seen the work. So I look at you, I've over quite a number of years, so it was nice to catch up with you, friends. And looking at the list, it's quite extensive, isn't it? Yes, but I enjoyed everything. I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, for coming in these times. I think you're going to be quite busy when the mayor actually returns to his duties very shortly. So just to say thank you, because you've been exceptionally busy and you've been an excellent representative for the town council.
Yes, although, oh, but one thing I didn't mention was the thirteen thirty.
Thirteen sixty.
Thirty sixty. That was really, really nice. And if you need any photographs, you can push it down here.
That was the standard.
If you have a way of doing that.
She's probably.
Okay, the men's service, great again. And the step of the switch on, that was really good this year. You already know. Let me do the top part. That's what you do the best. Okay? I think we will continue with the.
If you carry on, my interest in allotments too. So this one discussed with some detail at the last financial journal.
Time himself.
Financial journal, Practice Committee last Friday. So it's just a very short, holding report for this. And I'm just very attentive to the fact that we will be collecting events in the specific day period. I have nothing else actually for company unless any local train is there on the. Actually, thank you.
Okay. I'm concerned, I'm concerned, thank you for receiving feedback. And initially.
Mr. Mayor, I've got the main thank you. I just, actually, I think of the last sixteen meeting. Obviously, everything was going according plan for the twenty-second or the switch on, which, as you've already said, I can't really top that. We will next year. It was a wonderful, wonderful organisation of skills for the whole day. From one in the morning till eight o'clock in the evening. I must admit, we had a lot of people there, which is absolutely brilliant. We did have road management, we had to. It worked very well. The town team staff at Rockstone have done a brilliant job, besides all the volunteers and helpers. So really well, and I'm really pleased it did, because we did worry about it. And just to let you bring a bit of information that we hope might happen, is in fact, we might actually be able to have a possible farmers' market in the future. But that's for a lot more discussion yet. The next meeting, Mr. Deputy Mayor, will be in January, which I should be.
Mr. Chairman, I was at the switch on on the day, but I was involved in it. And the town council did support this event. We brought the hoodie bags, we assisted with vision of the Zeebo, etc., to assist Santa with his honourous task. We also paid for the electric steam organ, which he works. Town council committed to supporting this event and a number of councillors wrote on the day also helping at it. I'm waiting for official feedback early in the year, but so far, I understand that I came to do this, how it run, it was run this year. Though I have heard some people feel anxiety with regards to where Iceland was placed. I feel that perhaps that my name needs to be looked at in that area. But again, that's about twenty thousand three minutes. We will, of course, be given to anything that's meeting and recorded back here. If there's any other comments in terms of town teams.
I've shot them there. Oh, I think it's. Which of those do you remember? Do you remember those competitions?
What's next? Do you do the town sense management?
You don't do it, but it's the town sense.
I said, your interview is on that.
Okay.
But it's been judged today, we'll just wait until the post to announce who the winners are, so they judge it. So soon as they say who it is, then we'll know who it is.
Shall they vote? Shall they vote?
Mine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, we will, finally, since the neighbourhood.
Yes, this church is very weekly to update you. And I have been invited to attend a workshop on December, and I have been allocated a further three places. The representatives are going from the majority group and the minority group. We've also asked one of the councillors, Councillor Pearce, has been invited to see special interest in planning and be attended. Though I have asked for anyone else who's interested to let me know, I'll place the name on a reserve list, which is for the Rockstone Borough Council, should there be any cancellations. But I can't say whether or not there will be any extra places allocated. The Borough Council have said that if there is demand, they will run something similar in the new year, but when that will be, I don't know. With regards to the town council's application, the consultation period has now ended, and it's being evaluated up for a council. My understanding is it won't go to council for March at the very end. If that being the case, it will be for the new administration, for the local level and me, to look at this, to see how much to go for. So I have nothing else to point on. Fine. I will become the special planning committee on the ninth of January twenty fifteen. And I have feedback on the, on this working group on that day. I do apologise for this, it's the only idea planning in to this. That's the ninth of January. And of course, special P and E for all councils, all of these. Thank you.
I say you must, if anything, we should ask, they never plan it, I really have no other information on it.
Okay. Item nine, setting the matters.
This is the chairman. I'm sure you're all aware that lots of which council have now issued guidance with regard to the parking traffic issues, which I've been asking about for so long. There was a consultation period, the documents were displayed from the community centre. I understand several councillors also received information independently from M C C. And speaking with the officers involved, they wish me to get back to them on this, to get comments from the previous meeting. But this is just the start of the lengthy consultation process. I think the presidential and the.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I have had a chat with members from Rockstone and the county in certain streets regarding these planned or the proposal that we'd likely put forward. Obviously, there are certain areas like Pitfall Lane and Middle and not the Orchard Street, I have it. And I know a councillor Williams has, a councillor Pearce has asked for that to be done together, whilst it is going to cause some chaos. I'm already told that it probably will not happen together. Everything that the step of what we have asked for, for all the whole areas, have been informed that only stone will be done. For the simple reason is, it's not enough money. Secondly, this is only the first stage. And if anything is going to be painted anywhere, or any signs go up, it won't be till March to April to next May. We are going to have to wait and see. The more you push, hopefully, the more we'll get, but that's not guaranteed. So we have to be patient and we have to wait. And I don't think, Mr. Deputy Mayor, you're going to hear anything until this February. I'd be very much surprised if before then.
We're fast approaching the new financial year, aren't we?
Exactly. Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Again.
Councillor. Yeah, I'm, as a councillor in the neighbourhood, I've had lots of people talking to me about it. And why can't we have all just to go off and tell them? The Pitfall Lane system, I've already made my own responses, but highly extremely concerned about the Pitfall Lane system. Everybody has heard of it, have got no problem with the yellow lines, where they're going to stop on the financial side. But everybody is, whilst they're also horrified just what's going to happen to the other side of the Road and Orchard Street. As you know, I know the ground has gone from there and Rockstone ended up, it's important. Majority of people where there is not going to put up the yellow lines, do not have any garages or any parking or any driveways. They already suffer lots of problems from parking there, as does Lower Orchard Street in particular, and to a certain extent, so does Middle Orchard Street. Whilst nobody's got any complaints about that, the effect that is going to happen once those yellow lines on the other side, in my opinion, is going to become horrendous. There are two, three big bands that already park on that side of the road, the yellow lines, so they're going to park on the other side, or on Orchard Street, which is very narrow. And I think it's, whilst the idea is there, it is, to me, totally short sighted to not look the whole area. It's absolutely a fall. I don't think it's just short sighted, I think it's absolutely ludicrous. And I would like others to be advised, suggesting that they really should look the whole area. I'm sure I know councillor Rendell, I always say my own thing, but I think it gives the town council a lot of fun and actually suggests that it really is a disaster waiting to happen if they just do that and they really do need to look at the whole. Pitfall Lane, Orchard Street, a number of big line over there near to me, they can't know where to park either, they park on Orchard Street. It is going to create a horrendous problem. And to me, it really needs the whole area knocking out sensibly. Nothing will be more there, but, and I think perhaps that my suggestion would be, not suggest the council sort of suggestion, my suggestion would be is that those areas that are not going to put up the other line, if there is residence parking, so the residence can park on Orchard Street, the bottom of the Pitfall Lane, and prevent the parking that happens there, because ninety percent of the parking there, big room, and not going on Pitfall Lane or Orchard Street, I mean. And I'd like to vote that the council actually rightly suggesting that they're really going to look at the whole area.
Yes.
I actually agree with them. I think what they've done at the moment is to come up with some proposals. You know, they are supposed to be experts in this field, but if you look at the situation out here, for example, that doesn't bleed much.
Imagination, yeah.
So I do have concerns, because you're quite right, that in many areas, the post-yellow lines seem to be entirely appropriate. However, whilst they resolve small problems, they seem to create larger problems elsewhere. And this does seem to be the case on almost all of these projects. And I think, you know, I have no problem at all with this council writing. You know, I know that you've had the various officers, I've had all the various officers. I have to say, councillor Captain Stoll, being the Chair of the Traffic and Transport, he does tend to deal with more of those issues, and I take the lead on, you know, social care and health issues in terms of the work that we do and how it deals up. So I would also recommend that it goes forward to the Traffic and Transport Group for discussion, meeting in January. I've also been told that this is the beginning of the process, that there's more consultations to take place. And so we go on and refine actual situations, as you rightly say, and many of the issues, and you just leave a good mistake. But, you know, I have to say, I don't have an awful lot of faith in the so-called expertise when you look at some of the situations that they have created. And then having created them, the time taken to actually undo the mistake, it's on another.
Other money.
Other money, quite right. So, you know, I'm nowhere defending anybody, but within that department at the County Council, I'm disturbed, frankly. You know, and also the state of some of the roads around here as well, I'm just constantly bombarded with the street lamps, with pop-homs, with, you know, roads that we just go on. I'm concerned about the state of my car, I'm scared just driving around, so I think sometimes.
They're not listening to any of the local councillors.
I don't know who they are listening to, in all honesty.
The Chair, if you want, that you couldn't make it up, if you hold tight here and choose the morning at half past ten, there was a fish van parked outside a T S B bank selling fish. And there was nothing you could do about it, and there's traffic trying to get around it. I think you couldn't make that one up.
What is there of a chance, actually?
It's.
You say you don't have to pay ten pounds for the market? It's the same as the market, isn't it?
Which is why the chap who used to come to the market ceased to come in, because they're in the competition, so. Yes.
Yeah, it's, I can add on the, as the councillor said about the condition of the roads here, they are actually appalling. I have a lot of trouble with the combination this last year, I've been struggling with mountain brackets, just, he's going to add one or two more on, just because of the condition of the roads.
On your car?
On, 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 on correlation.
Oh, right, right, right.
The brackets got after square meters damage. There is just a lot of graphics. Not today.
Mr. Chairman, I have just quickly, but I have reported a number of large pop-homs and roads, and I'm sure they think that they wonder who I am, to keep them to you all, but they, I have, I do know they have been able to look at them all here, and still allowing, I keep being told they're not bad enough to be here. Which I can't understand, because now I, but I do. Another few people also contacted the guys that took transport by vehicle, and I did report that for some of the shop owners, that what had been done, as the resolution of the street lamps, and I did report those, again, on behalf of local residents, and they have been corrected, but there's some of it coming through, it's been reported.
They only appear to respond to accidents, so.
Every time I go out, I'm going to fall in.
On Balls Road, there's been an accident on Balls Road. The water mainly first, and it was, there was a pop-hole in the evening, cyclist went over it, and come off.
Excuse me, can we keep to the, yes. Councillor McCrae. Yeah. Well, talking of Balls Road, when it's school all the time, the parking on the zigzag again, it'd be nice if the traffic wouldn't actually go there and catch some people and move them on, because that's an accident.
Exactly.
Yeah.
At least you need for that one.
And it can say Washington Drive is still as bad as it's ever been, nothing's been done, and it's just getting worse. And I know lots of people have been in the look, and, you know, councillors have passed over to the police and the councillor, and they say to the police and they say to the councillor, but someone's going to get hurt, so.
I'm just saying, we can. If you respond to anybody that's been injured, if anybody's been injured and liked to put a claim in, I think everyone's smart.
I mean, the garage up there on Ickings Lane, they're taking out, they're doing repairs on the actual pavement. They've got a fan park there seven days a week, and they're doing repairs at the side, and the police wouldn't move them on, just come back again. They've got cars for sale on the pavement on both sides of the roads, and now they're co-opting it, it's ridiculous.
Well, I understand, I've assumed that one, I've had trading standards, with these, with various officers, I know you have been, you're unhappy as well. I don't really seem to want to actually deal with it, I'm shocked, actually.
So keep passing it for once, it'll work, mate.
At this particular moment, there's the closed section of the road with the traffic lights, traffic, uh, traffic, traffic lights on the end of Balls Road again.
Yeah, can we just, Mr. Chairman, just hang on, and Washington Drive, take a break.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did finish the one, there goes the next one.
Yeah, so I'm, that's, no, too, really, that's all I'd say.
Well, can I suggest that the town council writes a letter, again, on behalf of the town council, include all of these concerns? And see me, you know, to stand.
If I write to not any council, or if I don't write to the police as well?
Yes, I think that could be very hard.
A lot of these are police issues, and again, it's landmark, they stretch something, that is one of the problems. Yeah. Yeah, we don't, yeah, we must go out.
That's all we can do.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Don't decide that we, we need to know what we're going on.
So I'm afraid of the whole road issues outside the school as well.
Yes.
Can I, can I say, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that on every meeting we have, we talk about the same issue, the same issue?
Yep.
And it's going on and on, and truthfully, it's expanded tonight like a balloon. Can we get on, can we leave this subject, leave it on? But if people want to talk about the civic rules, they could have on the agenda, or else we're going to be here all night.
It's because, because we've had this consultation, so we've given us the opportunity, but I will write a full letter back to them.
Copy it, so copy it to myself. Copy it to stand as Chair of Traffic and Transport Group.
Yep.
And that's the.
I can confirm, actually, that that, just gets it, it's out, that started on the twenty-third of April, which was the beginning of the financial year.
It's a challenge, consultations do take a lot of time, they don't happen overnight.
Three years. You know, I was just requesting.
Also, as well, yeah.
They only appear to responding to accidents, so.
Maybe time I go out, sometimes it's falling.
Well, Falls Road, there's been an accident on Falls Road, the water mainly first, and it was, there was a pothole on the evening, cyclists went over it, and come off. Excuse me, can we please say it's ended?
The councillor, yeah. Well, talking of Falls Road, when you're schooling at the time, the parking on the zigzag again, it'd be nice if the traffic would have actually walked there and catch some people and move them on, because that's an accident.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Especially for that one.
And it contains Washington Drive, still as bad as it's ever been, nothing's been done, and it's just getting worse, and I know lots of people have been in luck, and, you know, councillors have passed on to the police and the councillor, they say to the police, and they say to the councillor, someone's going to get hurt, so they're...
I'm just saying, we can hurt, it's got to be... You don't need to respond to anybody that's been injured, if anybody's been injured, and likely to put a claim in, I think everyone's wrong.
I mean, the garage up there, on Ickings Lane, they're taking out, they're doing repairs on the actual pavement, they've got a van park there seven days a week, and they're doing repairs at the side, and the police wouldn't move them on, just come back again. They've got cars for sale on the pavement on both sides of the roads, and now the co-op station, ridiculous.
I can move.
Well, I understand, I've assumed that one, the trading standards, the police, the various officers, I know you have been, you've done a lot of work as well, I don't really seem to want to actually deal with it, I'm shocked, actually.
Keep passing it for once, and then wait, mate.
At this particular point, oh, there's the closed section, I don't know, there's traffic lights, traffic, uh, traffic, traffic lights on the end of Falls Road again.
Yeah, we just, Mr. Chairman, just hang on, and Washington Drive, they can play it.
I'm just telling you that's very interesting.
Yeah, we just finish the one, then go to the next one.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's true, really, that's all I had to say.
Well, can I suggest that the town council write a letter, again, on behalf of the town council, include all of these concerns, and, shall you see me, um, stand, and...
If I were to not turn the council, and not strike the police as well?
Yes, I think that could be very helpful.
A lot of these issues are police issues, and again, this landmark, they stretch something, that is one of the problems, yeah. Yeah, we don't, yeah, we must, we must.
Thank you, Bill. Don't decide that we, we need to know what we're going to have for John.
The uptake, and I'm afraid of the whole road issues outside school as well.
Yes.
Okay, we just want councillor to know.
Can I, can I say, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that every meeting that we have, we talk about the same issue, the same issue, and it's going on and on, and truthfully, it's expanded tonight like a balloon, can we get on, can we leave this subject, leave it on, but if people want to talk about specific rules, they've got it on the agenda, whilst we're going to be here all night.
It's because, because, because we've had this consultation, so it would have given us the opportunity, but I will write a full letter back to them.
And copy it, so copy it to myself, copy it to stand as chair of Traffic and Transport Group, and that's the...
I can confirm, actually, that that, sketch that's entered, that started on the twenty-third of April, which was the beginning of the financial year.
Because, because, because consultations do take a long time, they don't happen overnight.
A lifetime.
Three years, almost, you know, three years.
And I was just requesting...
Oh, as well, yeah.
I would interrupt the transport.
Yeah.
Well, in fact, could you append it to the minutes?
Yes.
Why not do that, so you know, we all got a copy of the letter going.
Still with it before January, that's why I was asking. There's a traffic in transport, so I, I would appreciate, I really appreciate what you're saying, I'd appreciate it, so I would...
So then the letter goes, you see the various people, but also a public figure, so we can't...
So if we're weavers now, then we've got one industry having everything exactly the same that was, you know.
Chairman, can I just say that I'm quite fondly, just very briefly, helped to be at the annual report to the local office, and then you'll be there, again, thank you not for you for all the work this year, and next term there will be a ten year Christmas launch, which is on very much for within, not impossible charity, no need to be issued for monitoring, but last time I did, and I thank everyone for doing this, so.
Okay, eleven is funny, afternoon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, talking with our, we're on this this evening, garage is due to ride off Street and go to Paulworth Avenue, this has been going for a while, the plans and plans have been amended, the amended plans that you have on the board, I hope you got the chance to look at them, as you know, I have, now, started thinking on the June, when I'm coming, when I'm available to, I hope you've all been able to to look at them, and I hope you did watch and look at them, they were actually on the website, but this one certainly was, I've, anyone who's any comment on this?
Can I just declare, the chair of these, the working group, I forget exactly what it's called, that this has been discussed, but there's, I'm not actually...
Uh, the chair of these, okay?
Coach for the good of the chair of these, yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of people round there, the top on the Welsh Avenue and Ride Off Street wants to find the same thing, they, they was concerned, because of the loss of garages and the amount of new properties it's been built, it's going to bring a lot of traffic to the area, they've been just saying, it needs to be, a lot, yeah, you know, off-street parking and that kind of stuff, but I've said to look at the plans, if you've got concerns, obviously, submit your own, but I've just said, I'd mention something, because, you know, if, if there's going to be so many flats on both sides, plus the loss of the garages, the people who are actually using, it's going to create a lot of traffic, and where are all the parked cars, it's going to build these new properties, we've got to make sure that we give them a nice street walk, yeah?
That's not actually, the, the state has been looked at for these, and it's up to the planners to determine whether they have allocated enough parking spaces within the plan.
Can I just first, my honourable councillor McCrae, you sit on the House of Performance Management Group, where this was discussed, and indeed, the use of the garages across the borough, and I'm sure it's minute of what the council made at that time about the garages, so I'm just wondering if you might just be...
Oh, yeah, because I'm on that group, yeah, I suppose.
I didn't realise you were on that group, you shouldn't have...
So, obviously, it's part of me, and I didn't even know it was still going.
But if you discuss, if you discuss the particular point, you do, if you've discussed the, the use of the garages, my understanding is that the, the garages not the uptake, or some, how many were in use, whether it was profit and to maintain, without, excuse me.
Just very briefly, for me, just very, honest, no, I mean, I think the scalpel is a mess, and as I've got somewhere else to die, I would welcome that's got to be a different, they are sorry for this at the moment. I do have a little bit of concern about the garages, but having looked at it, I would suspect that probably half of them are occupied anyway, and I think that's, my only concern would be is if they were, if they're all fully occupied, fine, but I would suspect that a number of them are, as is the case with lots of temple galleries around the place. And equally, I don't think, not necessarily the ones that might be, it may be, I would just maybe used, but they're not being used for housing cars, they're usually used for storing stuff in, I don't know, and I'm sorry, the garages should be for cars, storing whatever they may need, so.
Gosh, in my opinion.
Well, I know, so, but overall, I would welcome the idea, we're removing nice sort of things, the scalpel, the council's got somewhere else to go, and I think it's, it only be welcomed overall.
Yeah, I sort of welcome these kind of developments, I mean, the size, I basically don't know what they're being used for today, and I consider this as a good, an investment, I do want to see much more of it. As regards the garages being used for storage, I personally looked into this years ago, and what it was, I think, the garages was built, it was a slow take-up of them, so people approached the council, can we rent them out for storage, because the council at the time, uh, this time said, oh, yes, we do need them, and that's how, and then we came, storage changes for the garages, of course, the contract then still continues until they release them themselves, you know, people just apply for, take the point, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, is there, can I ask, if we could ask people on, if you support this application? Do you?
Paid off, so.
People live in...
Forty.
So, of course.
Yeah, yeah, so I can, I can send you comments, and then you, you can see, thank you. Um, the next one is one by the lady, no, it's then this bracket, I think it's actually a space, I think, it's, it's one of these, it's, yeah, it's, 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 it's single story front, it's like, it's then, we, we have been asked to bring anything with the front, an operation to the front, to the town, the town, as committed, so I have done, so the plans are up there, I don't think there's any problem with it, but I just, it's got your information, wasn't it, and I'm, I say you support this application? Yeah, it's just because I was asked anything with the front to bring in. Thank you. Um, the next one, now, this particular plan went on the borough council's website before it was sent about this after the council keys, and of course, you went onto the website and just couldn't get any plans, because there were plans on it at this point in time, I did put it on the agenda, and the plans are now on, so I hope everyone's got a chance to look at them. In the interim, I understand the councillor John Grant, borough councillor, there, and councillor Redar, we've also discussed this, and it has been called in by councillor Grant's request, so it will be going to the council, sorry, planning, completely at the borough control, if anyone's got any comments or things to take on this, I will be sending them into the borough.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, framework, obviously, it's ever been taking on, I think, what they do is brilliant, for a framework, amazing, couldn't they, but it would be nice to know what kind of people are putting in that area, in, in there, and if they're going to be, because I'm also going to talk about your plan, isn't it?
No, so, Mr. Chairman, all you can discuss is the plan, and while you might admire framework, and I, I assess the cafe's framework, company, we gave them three legs, but it's the planning application, what it's for, and the development for the church, for the user to dispose, that's what you've analyzed.
People change, don't they?
Yeah, yeah, so it's what, what is actually in front of you, this is to be amended before the council, at Brockstow, but if you, if you have any comments specifically on the plan, I'd have to pass them on.
Yeah, certainly, again, actually, we don't do building, we're obvious, uh, per usage, so, so, so to speak, and it has come out to, and I see this as, again, as a good investment for, for, for the town, well, they, they believe in this, and the town has in the past application, I fully support this, but...
It's the parking issues again, that you're...
Well, normally, per flat, there should be a parking space, I'll give that to the tenants.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's purely the plants that are in front of you, so whether you support it, whether you've had it with our council, or how you wish to deal with this, you have to construct me what you wish.
And there's also a substation in the J, you did have...
Yeah, there's a lot of issues around it, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, so do you wish me to say you support the application, do you wish me to say that you know the application, and what you can guide us as to how you wish that's on development? It has been called in, and I do understand the report, that there are some considerations from people that live near bar, but they haven't given it to the, given it to the borough council.
I think people watch on the application, so...
They were supposed to be out, and...
So, can we, to go, to, 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 to,